Okay. I call the Brattleboro Planning Commission to order for September 9, 2015. This is a public hearing regarding the land use regulations. This is the second public hearing that the Planning Commission will be holding on the proposed land use regulations. We began work on this document in May of 2014, and there was a sustained public outreach and comment period beginning in January of this year. We received many comments that helped shape the document that is before the public this evening. We gathered these comments at several small-scale outreach sessions focused to gather input from various stakeholders as well as regularly scheduled Planning Commission meetings. This process has consumed the vast majority of the commission's time and has been supported by the planning staff and by our consultant, Randy Saxton. At this second hearing, we will be inviting additional public comment. The purpose of tonight is to receive comments. We may only clarify intent or technical aspects of the regulations. After this hearing tonight is closed, we will consider all of the written and oral comments we have received and make any further changes as we deem necessary. The revisions of the proposed land use regulations will be forwarded to the Select Board. The authority to adopt the land use regulations rests with the Select Board. They will schedule and conduct their own public hearings on this matter, most likely in October. This public hearing was warned in accordance with state law. Sue, can you please tell us how this meeting was warned?
Yes. It appeared in the Reformer in mid-August, which meets the 15-day requirement. It was posted at three locations in town. We distributed notice of these hearings by our email distribution list, which is about over 300 people, and it was posted on the town website as well.
Thank you very much.
And it was in the accompanying article in the Brattleboro Reformer the week prior to the first hearing?
Yes.
On August 31st?
Very nice. Okay. I think we should dispense with the brief overview of the land use regulations because I think the public assembled is familiar with them. We just have a couple of procedures for public comment this evening. All persons wishing to be heard, please sign in at this sign-in sheet in the front table. Everyone will be -- opportunity to be heard. All comments shall be made from the microphone. Any individual making comments shall first give his or her name and address. Each person will be given an opportunity to address the Planning Commission. Please keep your remarks brief. I will recognize people in turn. Everybody who wishes to speak will do so before any one person speaks for a second or multiple times. Again, we will only answer clarifying questions as needed. And then, before we begin, Sue, would you please go over the written materials that have been submitted?
Sure. We received three new written comments this week from public. There's a letter -- an email from Adam Hubbard that expresses concern about whether or not the land use regulations have been simplified and that whether or not they'll increase certainty and predictability for development. He also expressed concerns about the different types of zoning that are included in it, and there's a list of recommendations that you can read. There are 20 of them, so I won't read them for you. We received an email from Maya Hesagawa, who wanted to compliment the Planning Commission on a job well done, thought the regulations were organized and will make it easy for the DRB to figure out if the project meets all the requirements. And then there was an email from Pierre and Ellen Cappy, who expressed concern about the requirement for professional drawings of all projects and was hoping that there could be some consideration to a sort of, you know, setting a threshold by which that would apply. So, projects under a certain size need to meet that requirement.
We'll now entertain any comments from the public.
Michael Bosworth from West Brattleboro. And I do have a couple of questions that might be clarifying questions, I'm not sure. I just want to say also that although I'm president of the West Brattleboro Association Board, I'm not at all speaking for the West Brattleboro Association this evening. We haven't really discussed the zoning regulations lately, although we're going to tomorrow night, a day late or whatever. So, just one comment. A concentration in the Village Center and the rural business zones, and I want to compliment the work that's been done because I think it, as far as I can see, in my personal opinion, seems to be what we'd like to see going forward. So, thank you. I do have two questions. Again, I don't know if you have to answer them or not, but the historical overlay district part, which is in West Brattleboro Village, I've read through that. I think, well, if I owned a building there, I might have to do a lot if I want to change anything on the outside. Are they any tougher than they used to be, or is this tightening up or serve the same as it used to be? I'm not familiar with the old...
I can't answer that, but maybe Rod or Sue can.
It's a new section, so we didn't have an overlay district for historic -- for structures in the historic district. So, that is new. I'm just trying to get to the part to speak to a little more clearly.
But I don't believe we changed any of the requirements, so I think the organization is different and...
So, I think the one -- if you're making an exterior modification, it actually can trigger, you know, review, which is not something that happens now. So, I'm just trying to... And then the standards having to meet historic preservation standards, I mean, they're kind of, they're guidelines kind of for their standards, but there's some, you know, movement in there, so they're not so strict. So, I think right now, if you have a building and you're making a change to the exterior, you know, that's not something that would get reviewed. You might need a permit for it if you're doing an addition or something like that, but in this situation, it would be reviewed.
Okay. The other question was from the flood hazard overlay district, a manufactured home parks, sort of the same question. Is that much tighter than it used to be? I realize some of this is impacted by recent floods, et cetera. Is that much of a change?
We did not make any changes to the special flood hazard area. I mean, it's as strict as it is now, or we're proposing for it to be as strict as it is now. So, you still cannot build in the floodway. You can't make a substantial improvement in the floodway, whether you're a manufactured home or whether you're still built.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
For the benefit of the gentleman who just entered, if you'd like to speak, please sign in on the sign-in sheet, and we'll be happy to hear the next commenter.
I'm Rod Whitaker, 267 Western Avenue. I'm part of a working group that's been looking at the proposed land use regulation since February, when there was a presentation to professionals that tend to work frequently with the documents. We submitted a number of comments back at the...
July.
Oh, what?
July.
July.
Was it July?
Yeah.
A month or so ago. And we've gone through the comments with the new document, and we think that many of our concerns, some were fully addressed, some, I think, are adequate, we can live with them, but we still have probably 12 to 20 concerns that we'd like to bring back to the board this evening. And so, the first thing I'd like to do, I guess, is ask Chairman Ms. Rufflin, is it okay if we present these 12 to 20 this evening?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's what we're here for, to hear your comments, so, yeah.
First of all, look at the map. One of our concerns was that the adequacy of land zoned RN for higher-density residential development. We know that some parcels have been added to the map since we made the comments, and we're grateful for that. There are still two that we would like to express concern over because we think they both have a great deal of development potential. One is the so-called Loch Drew parcel or parcels. L-O-C-K-E, and then it's another...
Another word, Drew.
Another name, Drew, D-R-E-W. It's actually, I believe, two parcels of land.
You want to go further?
Located right in here.
We studied this after your previous comments.
Hang on, Munro.
We didn't see where that went.
And I do understand that, you know, one of your criteria is trying to draw zone district lines and property lines, and in this case, one of those properties is under conservation easement as well. The part that has been studied in the past...
I'm sorry, are you talking right where the finger is, as it were? Are you talking in here?
No, he's talking, the rural parcel that's in between the two rural, the darker green.
Right, the dark green. See if I can...
Yeah.
There we are. Okay. The actual parcels themselves run all the way down to here.
These are the ones...
The part that we're concerned with in terms of its development potential because we think it is probably some of the best remaining land in Brattleboro for residential development is this portion of the two parcels up in this area. And if you might give consideration to either zoning all of those as RN and letting the conservation easement, if you might give consideration to rezoning both of those two parcels in their entirety to RN and let the conservation easement on the one speak for itself, or cut it across from the corner to corner of the yellow there, so that just that upper half would be zoned RN, we think that would have great benefit to the town in terms of accommodating future residential development. And then the other one is the Chase parcel, for which a development proposal has already been put forth, I think even approved, for 100 units or so. That's immediately adjacent to Living Memorial Park.
Right. I believe that that was approved, but it's expired.
No, I understand it, but the point I'm trying to make is that in the past, it has been studied to the extent that it appears to be capable of supporting up to 100 units of residential development. So, we think that too can play an important role in Brattleboro's future residential development.
Do you want me to put it on that?
So, just wanted to mention those two parcels and ask that perhaps you reconsider those two parcels for their value for residential use in the future.
All right. We'll take a look.
I think the primary thing that concerns the working group is the new planning development regulations and the fact that the lack of flexibility in use within PUDs currently, within the current ordinance, and this has worked to, in my opinion, some abuse in the past as well, but for the smaller parcels. But we would not have Grafton cheese today if it were not for the flexibility of having a use on that parcel that would not otherwise be allowed within that underlying zone district. The same thing applies to the Delta Business Campus and Commonwealth Theory. We think that having that flexibility is a vital component to, once again, Brattleboro's long-term growth, particularly in industrial or light manufacturing capacity. And as we look at the rigs, it might fit in best with the campus development PUD if one is not, if you did, I think ideally, there would be a sort of a multi-use PUD that would provide for, more for commercial and industrial uses in areas that would not otherwise be zoned for that. Do write down, you know, a rigorous review process, because not everything that might be proposed would be appropriate. But we think it's in the town's best interest to at least have the flexibility to have something like that considered and be able to be accomplished in a timely fashion.
Number three.
Okay. Now, those are the two major ones. These are just going to, these are more design-related, more technical issues that we still have concerns with, but they're not, I think, as all-encompassing and as important as those that I just put on the table. The slope requirements for earth excavation for quarries, to have to reclaim a quarry at slopes of 3 to 1, the state of Vermont allows reclamation to a 2 to 1 slope. We think, we suggest that the town should have its regulations for that earth reclamation and those slopes more consistent with those that the state allows. That allows the quarry to be much more efficiently operated, or more material to be taken out, which if we assume that quarries are serving a positive purpose for our communities in terms of providing sand and construction material, to be able to operate them in a viable fashion, both efficiently and get the, if we look at it as a resource, then we should be utilizing, to be able to utilize that resource to the maximum, we also think is very important. So, if that could be, particularly the 3 to 1 reclamation slopes, if you could consider changing those to 2 to 1, so it's more in line with the state standards, we think that would, something else would be in the best interest of the town. Also, I would point out, we really don't have that many quarries in Brattleboro, so in a sense, this might not seem to be too important, but one of the ones that we do have is the Public Works Quarry right across from the high school. And so, I think at least this reclamation issue should be discussed interdepartment with the Department of Public Works to see if they're comfortable with that. That particular pit's a small pit, so it even makes it more difficult to operate. So, once again...
Let me just clarify, you're talking about reclamation, not its operation, right?
Not its operation. This is, once it's reclaimed, because what you end up doing is having to not excrete some of the land or bring it in, or bring earth in. So, either of which makes the operation of it less efficient and more expensive.
Okay. Number four.
Okay.
That was four.
Oh, that was four?
That was three.
That was three.
No, that was three.
Yeah, sorry.
Number one had two parts.
That's right. My list to go back to later tonight isn't more.
We're on the same page. Retaining walls, limiting retaining walls to a height of 12 feet in the town of Brattleboro because of its terrain and topography also may not be in the best interest of the town. I noticed that when, that this section was rewritten and it allows for terraced walls, so you can have a wall here, a wall here, and a wall here, if you have more elevation difference to make up. But the distance is called for between the two walls is twice the height of the wall itself. So, you have 12 feet here, 24 feet here, 12 feet there. As you run that back, you end up with a slope of about 1 to 1. And you can do that with riprap, you can do that with reinforced, with other types of soil reinforcement. Much of the industry, of the land that is zoned in the town of Brattleboro right now under the current regs for industrial zoning is very steep, and it's going to be very efficient, or very inefficient to have to run slopes up and not be able to construct walls of probably greater than the 12 feet. I don't know what that number should be, once again, because I think the party that's going to be most directly affected by this, other than future development of some of the steeper industrial sites, is basically the town of Brattleboro itself, because that's where the current, so many of the current walls that exceed 12 feet in height are located along the sides of roads. So, we may be imposing something that will be very difficult for the town of Brattleboro itself to adhere to in the future. So, once again, Rod, could you perhaps just have that discussion with Public Works in terms of whether or not, from the private sector, I think we can live with it, but it will make some land much more expensive to develop.
I'm sure the town of Brattleboro appreciates your concern. Okay. Number five.
Okay. Okay, this was one, fueling stations. We had, we commented before about building frontage. I feel that as we looked at the frontage requirements for fueling stations, it was, I think I recall, like 150 feet of frontage. That seemed to be very excessive, and if we look at, once again, this notion of more compact development, more efficient use of land, less pavement, aesthetic considerations, because I think service stations are generally considered to be one of the most unsightly forms of human development that we have in our towns and cities. We're wondering why have a minimum of 150 feet? Why have a minimum at all? Our thinking was that the less frontage, perhaps the better. But once again, I think it's a value issue and one that's appropriately decided by the commissioner. We just wanted to question that.
Very good.
And along those same lines, because I think this does tie into it, and this may explain the 150 feet of frontage, the requirement that the pumps be placed at the side of the primary building rather than in front. The one place in town I can think of where that does occur is Cumberland Farms. And so, I guess the question is, is that, for fueling stations, is that the standard that we want to apply for service stations in this town? And then, this was a small one, but not sure why it exists. There's a separation requirement between residential driveways. I can't recall what that distance is, but is that really necessary? Should we have a minimum separation requirement between residential driveways? You can certainly see it with commercial driveways and intersections, but residential drives, we question.
Is that number six?
That was six.
Yep.
Yeah.
I thought so.
And the next one, cutting it in landscaping a bit now. And first of all, the performance bond issue. If I recall, the applicant has to place a performance bond for a period of three growing seasons from the time the planting is installed. I think, and I'm surprised, I don't know if you've heard from any small property owners, but this seems to place quite a large onus on small property owners in terms of having to put up that bond, or in some cases, a line of credit, I know it's been accepted by the town of Brattleboro in the past, but it basically ties up their money. They do not have access to that money while it's sitting there for that period of three years. Two things seem excessive to me. One is a three-year period, and one, and the other is the, should the bond be in the full amount of the plant material? Is all the plant material, does it all need to be insured? Does 50%? Might it only be 50%? Might it be for 25%? When you talk about the cost and then how you determine the amount to be put out there as well, if a piece of property is commercially landscaped, the cost of a tree, the size of, which is specified here for buffer plantings and front yard plantings, two-and-a-half-inch caliper tree, will probably, and the maintenance associated with it, particularly for a three-year period, a guarantee for a three-year period, is probably going to, one tree, $1,000. And if you look at the buffer requirements that you have, you're asking for quite a few trees. Shrubs, you know, maybe 75, 50 to $125 each. So, this is a substantial amount of money you're asking somebody to put aside for a number of years, and it will affect their ability, their ability to use that for other reasons, for their inventory, for other improvements. So, might there be some more creative way of dealing with that? It might be something where every year, you know, every year, war's returned, a smaller amount's put up there initially, but that's something that I think will eventually pose a problem or hardship to small property owners here in town. The landscape buffers themselves, actually, you did make a number of the changes that we had recommended there. The ones that, let me pull this out.
Was this number eight?
Yes.
Sounds like it to me.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we noticed that, the way the matrix was set up, the onus is on one, the party in one zone district as it relates to a piece of property in another zone district. And what we're questioning is, why should an RN parcel be required by landscape buffers with more intensely zoned uses on parcels within the urban center, the village center, neighborhood center, multi-use, rural business, institutional, industrial, and so on? It sort of seems unfair to place that onus on RN properties. We have the same thing with our R parcels. Buffering is still required on the part of rural residential parcels. Do keep in mind, this is not every house that exists in a rural residential area. These are only projects that would require site plan approval within, within those zone districts. So it's not like every, when I say rural residential, don't think of it as each individual house. But I believe the trigger probably would be three units.
Yes.
Yes.
This is major site plan.
But, once again, the rural residential parcels would, the screening that would need to be, but there would be, on their dime, when they abut the village center, the service center?
Yes.
Neighborhood, commercial, institutional, and industrial zone districts. And we would question whether or not RN parcels should be required to provide buffers with the other, with other residential properties as well, RN, RL, rural zone districts, which right now, they would be, and the WR, the waterfront district as well. One other thing, and...
Is this number nine?
I'm gonna, let's put all this together under landscaping buffers, that sort of follows that general category, maybe a different, a different part of that. It's not, well, it does appear to be clear, and that landscaping would be required along the entire property line between these, between these uses. And we would question, or we would suggest that only the objectionable characteristics need buffering. Not necessarily, if you have a 1,500-foot property line, that the entire property line would need to be, be planted at that same level, if at all, planted at all. So, if that could just be looked at a bit further, and it, that might be a matter of just rewarding or inserting a sentence to that effect. Oh, lighting. I think the way...
Okay, so this is number nine.
This will be...
Does it matter?
Oh, yes.
You should see me at baseball games.
And actually, maybe if I could ask a question here, because somebody might be able to give the clarification here. I think the way it's been rewritten pretty much serves our needs. We think we're going to have a much lower level of lighting here in our community than what we found in other communities. We also think that that's potentially a problem between existing uses and proposed uses, that they will not be competing on an equal playing field, because anybody that's in, with their lighting is in, under the current ordinance, their lots are going to be much brighter. The eye's going to go to their properties. That's just, that's just how it will be, I guess will have to be. We can certainly design and provide adequate lighting for the uses with what's been rewritten. The one question that we have, though, is, there's this notion of a uniformity ratio in lighting. And what the uniformity ratio is about is the eye adjusting from bright light to dark light, or vice versa, being blinded by glare. The uniformity ratio, you work to achieve even lighting levels throughout a site or the developed portion of a site. So, and what that does, once the eye adjusts, it can see as well at a lower level as it can at a higher level, as long as everything is uniform. It's always been a critical part of lighting design in the past. And I understand that how this is being looked at is different now, but to me, this notion of a uniformity ratio is still vitally important. And I think in our previous notes, we mentioned that the way it's currently being measured is that you have lumens per acre of the site. And the shortfall here, in my eyes, is that everything can be concentrated in one area of a site legally, because there is no maximum there. And even a site to be developed, if, let's take the car dealership, if they didn't want light to the rear of the dealership, but wanted it all out on the street, they could transfer everything to the rear of the site, out to the front of the site. Uniformity ratio would moderate that. It wouldn't keep them happening, because you'd have different levels of lighting for each, each use on the site. But the uniformity ratio, in my eyes, is a key ingredient of lighting design. Was that given any consideration from the previously submitted comments, the uniformity ratio?
No. I don't think it was described in this town.
Could, could Brandy be asked about that, just, she could probably talk to a landscape architect, that she's working for, Kathy Ryan, and get Kathy's take on it.
Good.
The other thing, when we get to the, to the level of lighting, that was always something that was considered at Act 250 as well, in terms of the photo venture several provided. So, in a sense, the town's working with a, a different ordinance now than guidelines that, that were originally suggested, and I, as far as I know, are still being used by Act 250 when looking at lighting for projects, so.
Is this number 10?
I guess, I've lost track.
That's okay.
Grading, did you say?
Grading.
Okay.
And I think our main concern is, I'll read for made-up remarks from our comments before, on slopes between 20 and 25%, we feel that the conditional use threshold should be increased to one acre to allow for disturbance or clearing limit of 40% of the land in that slope category.
Did that comment have a number? Like, did you know?
I can, the original draft that we were working from, it was...
Did you have a big table? They didn't number their comments.
Oh, never, never mind.
3-23.
Okay.
Because much of the newly proposed industrial zone lands surprises slopes in excess of 20%. So this, that requirement puts a huge constraint on the developability of those industrial lands, those newly proposed industrial lands. Someone nods for them or another, so. Oh, one other thing, too. Distinctions between major subdivisions and minor subdivisions. If that could be moved forward, somewhere in, just for ease of use of the document, because as we were going through it, we went through it from beginning to end, and we would see references to major subdivision and minor subdivision, but it wasn't until we got into Section 4.
I thought she did that.
This was all through Section 3, but it wasn't until we got into Section 4 that we first encountered the definition. And the same thing might be said of major, minor site plans as well. I don't know if that, I don't know if that's the case with, with the site plans or not, but since I'm talking about it on subdivisions, maybe it's something you could look into for the major, minor site plan review as well. It sets up that standard very quickly, so you know what you're dealing with as you're looking at performance standards in Section 3. The, the other area of concern is street and driveway standards. And this is one that Peter Gomek has some major concerns with, just because the standards that are being asked for in the new zoning regulations don't really meet best engineering practices. For instance, in just, something as simple as elevating, what we term super-elevating a roadway around a corner, this would not allow you, an engineer, to set that at a proper gradient for a high speed, for certain high speeds on curves, or a short curve, even a lower speed. And there are a number of, virtually everything in here that we commented on previously still remains a problem. And, once again, if we're talking with the town, I think the easiest way to resolve this is perhaps if Peter and Rod could get together with Steve and Helen, and go over these standards, so that everybody's comfortable with the standards, I think that would certainly And I think that's pretty much it. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Whitaker.
That was 12.
How many did you have?
I got 12.
How many were there?
12.
Wow.
But some subparts.
I got 11, but that's okay.
I didn't number them.
Okay, that's good.
Okay.
Thank you, Manu.
Are there any further comments?
Michael, I just have a short question. I didn't hear from Manu. Were you speaking on behalf of SVE or some collaboration, or?
No, it's a work, there were six of us, two engineers, two architects, a landscape architect, and an attorney. I have one more, I mean, after, having said all this, I think this has been absolutely wonderful documented, and how the process has been carried out, particularly the transition from the town plan and the goals of the town plan into this document itself. The problems that we have, that we've had with this have been mostly the fine tuning of it, not so much the structure. We have the one big issue on the use within P2D, but you can see, all of my comments tonight were on nitpicking design issues. I will say that the document is difficult to use because of its size. It will take a lot of getting used to it. I'm not sure if a layperson, for instance, can come to this, can pick this up, and do a simple site plan for commercial use, but that's sort of the case with virtually any zoning ordinance anyway. I have reviewed other, you know, other zoning ordinance recently in terms of how communities are moving. They do seem to be moving in this direction, of what I think I would consider to be more Our concern, our primary concern is the flexibility and maybe lack of flexibility, more the lack of flexibility that may, oh, we don't know yet, we probably won't really know until we start using it, the lack of flexibility that may be inherent in this document because it is so, so large and complex. So, but I applaud everybody who's been involved, because I think it's, it's quite a work, quite a work of art.
Well, thank you, Mr. Whitaker. We'll take that as a bonus comment.
I'm certain, well, that's not working.
Okay, so, last chance for any further comment? We thank you all for an attendance.
Robin. Robin.
Jump up. On Robin's behalf of Brattleboro. I just had two quick things, and they're just little architectural things. One of them was in Section 222E2B. It says that a porch has to be 50% of the facade, so I think it's in the, hold on a second, service, no, it's not service center. It's in the Village Center District, but if you would look at some of the other architectural elements that are already within that district, there are a lot that have four squares, which are just a standard typical house built around 20s to the 40s. And they have like a smaller porch, but it is actually a porch, not just a portico or something like that. So that was, it's just a little, but if someone was keeping with what their neighbor had, and they had a lot, and they wanted to do something like that, instead of having to go for a variance, it might be nicer to just say like 30% would be a porch as opposed to the 50. And the other one, which, and this is just, I'm not a big fan of flat roofs, but in the urban center district, as Rod is laughing, so there are a lot of, it's, oh, wait, sorry, I apologize, I looked at the wrong part. It's Section 223E5, and the lowest recommended roof pitch for New England is historically a 412. But if we're talking about, and I understand why this was put in, but if you're talking about certain structures less than 6,000 square feet, so 4,000, there's a chance that that could be one story. And having a flat roof would actually be easier to build and probably more cost-effective than to have to put a pitch in it without having to put like a strange parapet on it. It would just be something to recommend that maybe in that particular thing, that a flat roof be allowable, and that, those were my two suggestions, and then I'm just going to back away.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so...
Oki's back.
14.
This will look as though it's a very serious one, but it's not, it's not as difficult as it might look. as it may look. One of the concerns that we expressed as well were the dimensional standards related to the RN district. And the, we looked at the maps online. We used three criteria to determine whether or not lots are in conformity with, lots in the RN district are in conformity with the proposed zoning or whether they're not. And there are probably about 10 that we could have used. The three that we used were minimum lot size, 6,000 square feet, minimum frontage of 60 feet, and all this information is online, maps online, and then setbacks. And as best I remember, there is a, and we only dealt with a minimum setback here, not the maximum. Minimum setback, front yard setback of 15 feet, side yard setback of 15 feet, and a rear yard setback of 20 feet. There are also setbacks for garages and accessory structures, which we didn't factor into this. But as we did a study of neighborhoods in town, what's in red there is non-conforming in the RN district. This is the area, well, High Street is here, Green Street is here, Cedar, Spruce, and Oak Street. And there's really disturbing numbers that come out of this. On High Street, from where the zone district begins to where it intersects with Green Street, comes Western Avenue, there are 42 properties. 38 are not in conformance with the new zoning ordinance. Oak Street, there are 30 properties, 28 are not in conformance. Those are two really nice streets. If we talk about the character of our community and we say, what kind of community do we want to have, residential community, those are two streets that I think we would cite as examples of what we'd like to have. Chapin Street, every house on Chapin Street is non-conforming.
Doesn't surprise me.
Another really nice street. Eric, Washington.
Oh, hell.
Nice street. I mean, oh.
Property lines are one foot off the back of the house.
Or at the side.
Yeah, that's what I mean, side.
Yeah, the side is really the kicker here. Washington Street, 35 houses on Washington, 35 properties on Washington, 33 in non-conformance. Within this whole area here, it's owned by Pine Street, Canal, Prospect, and Main, 78 percent of the properties were non-conforming. The fix is simple. It's what I would suggest doing is reducing the minimum lot size to 5,000 square feet. Maybe you can do a search just within a neighborhood and find out, there'll be a few that will not meet that. There's something down the 4,000-foot range, but anyway, this figure of non-conformance, non-conformance, which is up in the 75, 80 percent range, my thinking is that should actually be flipped. You would want to find probably at least that number of inconformance within each zone district. And this one in particular, because I think this one really establishes a lot of the character of the town. Reducing the minimum lot size to 5,000 square feet, the minimum frontage to 50. Side yard setbacks becomes a bit more difficult. I think the development pattern that we, is that board easy to write on? Is it?
Sure.
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
Is there, yeah, there's 10, sir.
I was looking at the development pattern in the older areas of town, Sparkville, frequently find, it says, this being a driveway, there being a house here, property line down here, property line there. So on one side, the houses tend to be very close to the property line, where there's a driveway running to the rear, they tend to be much wider. Some communities use a total between the two. And I think what might work well for Brattleboro would be consistent with the notion of a 50-foot frontage, 150-foot frontage. And you take the house width, because many of the old parts of town tend to be narrower, 24 feet wide, go back deep on, but if we take that 24, that leaves us with 26 feet. If we did seven and a half feet minimum, but that each lot would have to have, seven and a half feet here, 17 and a half feet here, so the total side yard setbacks would, total 25. I think that would turn this degree of non-conformity on its head.
So you're interested in a combined side yard to fix as a fix?
Some communities do that. I could be down on the Boston area, some of the, I can't which ones, Sparkville might have been one. But they have an absolute, they have a lot of the same development pattern with the driveway, 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 where this is, and I think actually, our house is like that, and I believe yours too, Eric, isn't it?
It's one foot off the back line of the house is the property line and the driveway's on the right side, yeah.
And that's a very, if you look in the older areas of town, you'll see this taking shape, and this one is always the problem. It's a, hardly any of these meet that 15 feet.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Whitaker. All right. Going, going, gone. Any more public comments? Hearing none. We thank you for your attendance this evening, and the public hearing is closed.
We adjourned the public hearing, and now we're going to call to order the public meeting. And let's approve the minutes of August 3rd and August 31st. All in favor? Okay, motion is carried.
Any announcements? Do you have any announcements?
I sent out an email yesterday about a rain garden, kind of a day and a half rain garden workshop over in Hinsdale with some speakers, and then actually building a rain garden. So if anybody has the time and is interested, it's free.
I signed up.
I really want to go. We talked about the rain garden for two hours.
Well, Liz and I will become experts. So if you have the time, I think it will be good.
I'll have you come over and shovel my rain garden.
I got a call recently.
We consult.
I got a call from somebody in town who wondered if the conservation commission or planning commission consulted on that kind of thing.
Oh, that's interesting.
So there's that. The other thing is, they have a green infrastructure, yes, next Wednesday, I think it is, Wednesday evening. So if you're interested, you could check that out, too.
Next Wednesday?
Next Wednesday, I think, I don't have the correct times, but I think it's at the co-op.
It's 5, I'm pretty sure it's 5:30 or 6:30.
Yeah.
And I just have an announcement, because I'm on the, I'm on the Wyndham Regional Commission appoints members to the Connecticut River Joint Commission Subcommittee. And we usually have a group that cleans up the Connecticut River. It's part of this greater source to see effort. And we were going to have two groups, one in the Walpole area and one in the Brattleboro area, and both groups looked at the areas that they usually clean and found that they were clean and there was no need. And so we're not doing it this year, but for a very good reason.
Cool.
Thank you.
So are we back on, did you put this back on?
I did. The light's on here.
Yep.
All right. Public comment, there's none. Let's move right into the discussion of public hearing comments. I know Sue made a chart from our last public hearing.
Well, I'm sorry, you're just getting it, but literally I was working on it at 5:20 this evening.
So can I just ask, how will we be dealing with, since Brandy's not here, and the comments from tonight, like, how will we be dealing with this?
I think what we'll do this evening is just review the comments from the last hearing and the comments that we received tonight. Our staff will be kind enough to digest for us, and then on October 5th, which is our next meeting, we'll discuss them there, and then try quickly to get this to the select board.
Does that timeline work, Steve?
Yeah, well, theoretically, we would hope that there would be the first select board public hearing in late September, the second meeting of September. So it pushes off the project effectively at least two and a half weeks.
It would be helpful if we could deal with this tonight, and then if we can get a chart in advance of the next one, and then we'll all study it so we could be...
I have to warn you. That's good. Some of the information that was presented tonight is going to take a while to analyze, and we are suffering from colliding work schedules for other projects because we're already late with this. So it's going to be difficult, but yeah, we'll have something for you.
The PUD, we've discussed.
Yeah, there's some things that are straight policy decisions. There are some where we have to actually tease out the technical implications or verify the information that was provided tonight. Would hope that we would have something to circulate to you by September the 30th to the October 5th meeting.
Something, just, you know, something like PUD that has been discussed already, comments expressing concern about flexibility in use and examples of such projects that wouldn't have been able to happen. I'm assuming that's correct information, because I don't know.
Let me tell you, I'm so glad you brought that up.
That's what I wanted to clarify.
Because, you know, we've discussed this forever, and the PUD, you know, as it is now, it includes, incorporates within it a use change, because it has to go to the select board, and it has to go to the planning commission, and it has to go to the DRV, so it has all this. And our goal was to streamline it. And the way to streamline it was to say, if you're not having a use change, it's very easy. And if you are having a use change, you just have to go through that gauntlet, which is perfectly normal for a use change in any other scenario. So to say that we're denying them a use, you know, the flexibility is not really true because it's really the same process for use change that you have now.
The question about the underlying, like, and this is something where I just, you know, I haven't memorized all the things, you know, is there validity to that? Like, the comment about the concern that it's not somehow, I don't even understand exactly what the comment was about, if it's not connected to the underlying zone?
No, it's not valid.
It's not, okay. I just wanted to confirm that because I think that it's helpful to get some clarity about, you know, yes, there are going to be areas that we've already discussed them, but when people come and say, like, hey, I have a concern about this, you know, it's just helpful for me at least to know, is this something, is this a concern?
Is it going to ruin the town?
No, that's not my question. My question really is, is like wanting also to make sure that we are giving fair consideration to the comments that are coming in and not just being like, well, we already talked about that. And so I just want to make sure, you know, that's why I'm asking the question.
Well, the PUD in particular, I mean, we discussed at great length in the town plan process and at great length for the past two years.
Right, which is why I think it's important, just, I mean, you know, and I appreciate the clarification, because the comment, as it was presented, indicated to me, if that was accurate, you know, a valid concern. So I want to, I want to, I just want to make sure we're rushing this to the public.
Well, for example, if graft and cheese came up today, or under these new regulations, you know, they would, if they had a use that was not permitted, although the uses for the PUDs have been expanded.
So, yes, so in fact...
The comment that he said three different places that wouldn't have been able to happen, is that accurate?
No.
Okay, thank you. That was just what I wanted to clarify.
And so the key point here is lost in the criticism being presented this evening and when the town plan was approved and in previous public meetings, including in front of the select board on the proposed land use regulations. The current system that we work under is not analyzed by these interests, and they present their criticism of what we're proposing in terms of a reduction of flexibility, forgetting to mention that the flexibility that they enjoy with the current system requires them to do exactly what it takes to affect a zoning change, because that's in fact what it is. So their criticism of the existing system is that it's overly complex, it's extremely time-consuming, it's political, and it takes a lot of resources to do, which means they claim that people wouldn't do it. And then when we respond with a system that clearly separates what you would need to do to get a zoning change from what you would need to do to get a PUD, their criticism is the flexibility that we enjoy when we go to write an entirely new zoning district is lost to us because you're now saying, if you want a zoning change, you should get a zoning change, and if you don't want a zoning change, you're welcome to use a PUD system. So it's, that's really, and so their position hasn't changed. I feel that we've given them adequate hearing. I feel that the select board is familiar with their position. I think that there is an argument that you could make in a different jurisdiction that what they're proposing would be okay. Our response here is to embody a couple of things. One is that we think the PUD process is becoming less and less popular over time in response to some other shifts in the way planning processes work. But insofar as you would want to use a PUD process under these regulations, the proposed land use regulations, we've developed templates which are responsive to two things. The most common, or the single biggest projects that we've seen develop as PUDs in recent time, so that includes a campus-style development, stuff in the rural, you know, with the rural enterprise aspect to it, so that would include graft and cheese. And we've looked at the kinds of sites and kinds of range of uses that we think you could make a coherent argument that the PUD process is the most effective way of processing. That's what we've got. If it was to come to pass that we were missing a template or we could, you could benefit from another template, the system is open enough for us to actually make that amendment.
Great, thanks for that.
So we think we've addressed the issues, but ultimately, it's a policy choice. And the policy choice is pretty stark. It's between what we're proposing and what currently exists, which there were, this group of people have been extremely critical of what currently exists also.
Sure, sure. I just wanted to clarify if those, if those projects could happen under the PUD. That was really all my question was.
They asked for it to be streamlined. And it is streamlined.
Breaking out at the exact critical point, which is, if you want a zoning change, then you need to figure out whether you're willing to take on a zoning change. And if you don't want a zoning change, then there should be a template, an existing template in this toolbox that's going to facilitate you doing it.
Thank you. And the uses are greatly expanded. Oh, let's look at this lovely chart here. Yep, let's start with number one. Why is stuff meant to be grossed change from one?
It was not really clear if this was a complaint or just seeking a clarification.
I think it was part... I think it was partly clarification question.
I think that by the time the meeting had ended, the commenter had understood that we had to make the change somewhere along the property line, so...
And we chose property line in distinction, distinct from the current method, which is distance from the road.
Okay.
And it's really not, those that are non-conforming are already non-conforming?
Yeah, I don't think that there's any sort of effect. It was just a comment without it.
Okay, I just figured.
Number two, 82 and 84 Linden Street.
I support that change.
I'm good with it.
Me too. Okay. All right. 94 Vernon Street.
This is the Blue Seal Building that is just south of Marlboro Graduate Center. It's just, nobody needed me to pull it up.
No.
It's the end of the park, right?
Yep.
It's kind of like a low...
I'm fine with this recommendation.
It's right, it's right by the border.
Yep.
It's on the other side of the tracks, I mean, there's...
Yeah, but I definitely don't, I feel that people don't understand the benefits of the waterfront zone. And it's a good thing?
Yeah.
Yeah, and this, this is just wrapped up, this, this is going to be sacrificed for the new bridge, which facilitates better development of the waterfront. So it's just not a, it's just not a...
Yeah.
So what's about...
Accept the recommendation.
Yep.
Make neighborhood center residential overlay in the existing districts. I don't understand.
I probably wrote that wrong. I think he wanted neighborhood center to revert to their old, their existing districts and put a residential overlay on top of it.
So the assumption or the position of Mr. LaCroy was that rather than making existing commercial uses non-conforming in neighborhood center, including automotive uses and other things, automotive repair uses.
You mean all those various zoning districts that we've streamlined?
Well, there's two neighborhoods that was proposed. One is that Exit 1 stretching north as far as Fay Brown and, and the Conner Lodge. And then the other one is on Putney Road, taking in a couple of different districts, but basically focused on the area of Putney Road just north of the Veterans Bridge. And so in both instances, there's a mix of commercial uses and very little residential. And what he was suggesting was leave all the existing commercial uses in place and then just add a residential overlay. And for us, the key point is generally use overlay districts to add a further layer of review and restriction on a use rather than actually open up to broader uses, which is a slightly technical thing, but it's important to observe it would be the exact reverse of customary practice. And we actually think that what we're attempting to achieve with the neighborhood center is more than simply adding residential. It's to allow for and focus on facilitate the development of commercial and mixed use activity that contributes to the neighborhood, rather than say, in the instance of both Route 5 at Exit 1 and Route 5, which is still Putney Road, which is, you know, passing traffic, right? So that's, that's really the effort that's been attempted there, so...
I support staff recommendation. I support the recommendation we changed.
Good.
Yep.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, number five. This was a very interesting comment. So Act 250 currently subjects projects to archeological review?
Yes.
But Act 250 is only invoked for certain projects, right?
Those with existing Act 250 permits or those exceeding term acres of development. So large projects, basically.
I think it might be something that we can look on in the longer term, if it's necessary. And that we shouldn't kind of stop the process now to include this, but in the longer term, if there's any modifications that need to be made, we can do, we can include this at a later time and discuss.
Is there a document that, I mean...
You mean document that we'll look at it in the future?
A document, almost just acknowledgement, like a, like a sort of humanistic consideration of it or an awareness? You know what I mean? Like he, like he put something on the table that just wasn't on the table. And I understand that it would be incredibly complicated, not any kind of, you know, to like apply it.
I mean, well, yeah, in terms of adding expense to a development, it's huge.
Yeah, yeah. But I still want it to be on the table. So what I'm suggesting is maybe there's a framing statement or there's just some way to...
Well, what would have to be done was, you know, when we were considering the subdivisions and we had a whole list of factors like historic or that would, that would be discounted from the overall subdivision area, that you'd have to have like a state map.
Yeah, I understand. I'm not even going there. I'm just saying a simple framing statement.
Yeah, the beginning of the land use regulations that somehow honors that there are things we don't know about the historical use of the land in relation to the Native American peoples that lived here and that our intent is that people would consider that and that in the future we will attempt to consider it. You know, just something along those lines to, to make some acknowledgement of it. My worry would be if you ordered something in a way that suggests that somebody should be taking some sort of initiative based on it, that that would like hang up, that would hang things up. What, what I was thinking if we wanted to do something about it is maybe a, an acknowledgement as part of like the purpose statement for why we're undertaking this process, like in order to, in order to honor, you know, the past, you know, existing use of the land for however far back it's been used by humanity, you know, that they've taken on this process or something like that.
I guess my gut reaction is that, trying to think where, it's this, you know, discussion of it seems more appropriate for the town plan and laying out what we think those resources or where those locations might be. I'm not sure, I mean, it might be something that we may be able to find someplace to put it in here, but really it's just...
More appropriate than...
Yeah.
Yeah, do we have a...
Because this is basically like the land use law of Brownfield Row. And then, like I said, we might be able to find a place to put in a sentence like that or like you're suggesting, but we'd have no teeth and...
Right, I understand.
And it would, I think it'd be, I think it'd be weird to, in here because it would suggest, it would suggest, and you have to do something about it and it would leave uncertainty for somebody who's trying to take action based on this.
So I would have it be kind of in the tickler file of the town plan.
Yeah, we can definitely capture it for the revision to the town plan. I guess... I'm trying to think about greenfield development. I, you know, I don't want to assume that just because you, you know, live in one of the traditional neighborhoods and that, you know, there's nothing to discover there. But I think if, if you were going to propose development of a larger scale, I'm trying to think of the conservation subdivisions and other tools that were introduced with these regulations, whether, if you were to pursue the conservation subdivision process, you are automatically also likely to file an act if you're going to where this could come up as a review item, but that's what I'm trying to get. So are there instances where you could pursue a conservation subdivision? And mapping provided by the state could suggest the presence of an archaeological site and that you respond to that in some way? I just don't know to answer that question.
I don't know how it works with Act 250 exactly, but I, I am aware kind of with brownfield sites. So, you know, it's somebody from the state historic preservation office that looks at the site and says, well, maybe looks at historical uses, so whether it's industrial archaeology or whether it's Native American, you know, there's something about that site that they say, oh, we want you to do some research on. So it doesn't, I don't think it applies across the board. Maybe it does in Act 250.
I'm not sure what you mean by across, across the board. I mean, I guess what I'm trying to get...
Any site, any site that goes up to Act 250, is it, are they going to...
Yeah, I think they maintain a database and, yeah, if it's got a known...
They have a database because there's somebody at the state that has got background in this.
Most of the projects that I'm involved in in Vermont, you have a specific archaeological consultant who looked at the property and assesses it for its likelihood for Native American use because it's near a stream or on a bluff or...
Right, exactly.
And, and, you know, it's, it's expensive and it's time consuming and it's quite rigorous. So I think we'd have to think long and hard about what we would do to impose this sort of restrictions on, at this small scale.
I support what I think is the staff's recommendation to put this on the back burner and not, not incorporate it into this document, but to find, to supply the traffic for...
Yeah, I think the town plan would like give us time to find some sort of a non-onerous way to bring this to the public's attention.
I like the idea of it being more kind of addressed in the town plan process in terms of the common sense. And I agree, right now, this is, you know, this is a legal document of how things have to go and we don't have the, and if there was already a map that was, you know, some sort of overlay district that would, you know, that was, they had to decide, do we want to impose that, but, but it doesn't seem, it seems like, and I think that that was the way, the comment was offered also, I think, in that spirit of raising awareness and, you know, bringing, you know, it's not like there was a specific like, you know, particular desire or anything. So I, I'm comfortable with, you know, having the intention of it being something to revisit with the town plan.
Okay. Number six, wood product establishment.
There were two comments about that, weren't there?
Yeah, there were.
It's just says standards should be reviewed again.
Should we, can we just talk a little bit more about whether it's true that someone could start up some sort of like manufactured housing process? Let me see.
The current definition is the key point and it does allow a broad reading would allow up to include the construction of manufactured housing.
Maybe we could get that back a little?
So it's page 5-10, the establish, an establishment that manufactures wood products other than furniture such as lumber, plywood, veneers, wood containers, wood flooring, wood trusses, and pre-gravitated wood buildings. Manufacturing may include sawing, cleaning, shaping, laminating, or assembling wood products starting from logs or lumber.
Yeah. And, and so this would be kind of a rival industrial use that's not in the industrial zone.
Well, it depends, it's a scale question. So let me illustrate with a couple of different hypothetical developments. So in the first instance, you've got a small property with limited buffering and old agricultural buildings that have been repurposed into workshops and some open space. And the construction of manufactured homes happens both inside and outside those structures. So once you've got the general external, you know, walls and roof of the manufactured home, then the workers move inside and they complete the work on the inside. And then it is towed away. And then, you know, you could have a whole kind of production line going of these kinds of things. So that would be, depending on where it was located, you could have a dramatic increase in truck traffic and oversized loads, bless you, oversized loads and general traffic associated with the number of employees working at that site. If it's on a dirt road or in a fairly remote location and surrounded by a combination of other rural uses such as farms but also residential uses, it could constitute a set of activities that need to be mitigated through landscaping and buffering, distances for, to allow for noise decay associated with the production process and other kinds of constraints closely associated with the traffic impact. The same activity could happen on a farm with frontage on Route 9 where the prevailing level of traffic and the number of 18-wheeler vehicles and other noises associated with just that location mean that it's sort of white noise and the scale of that development activity fades into insignificance even though it's on rural, on land zone rural and it's using rural structures. So the question is for us, how and where do you set the line so that if I own a farm, a large farm with frontage on Route 9 or a major route, where those mitigating factors are not going to be so difficult to resolve, how do we allow for that or do we allow for that? And then how do we provide the DRB adequate review criteria so that if it's the first example, somebody on a quiet dirt road that's engaging in a quasi-industrial activity, how do we ensure that either A, it doesn't get permitted because it's conditional, or B, the impacts are mitigated adequately? That's, that's the goal. And the way it was framed in the beginning was to allow for some hypothetical notion of somebody harvesting lumber or timber from the parcel or nearby parcels and processing that all the way through to, bless you, finished, finished sections of a structure or finished structures. The, rather than thinking of, bless you, or, you know, construction trails or whatever that is, think of the person that might spend their winter making reproduction Amish sheds or something all winter long because they've got access to all materials and the time and a barn and they put them out on Route 9 with a resale sign on versus somebody...
Would that be considered wood product? I mean, like, could that fall into a craft kind of thing instead? I mean, I think that the question really is between industrial activities and, I mean, because that doesn't, what you're describing doesn't sound like a, I don't know.
Right now, the definition doesn't distinguish between those two things.
Right.
And that's, and that to some extent is the issue. And then there's other things such as, and we'll get into it later on down this chart, converting a barn into a place where you can have a wedding or, you know, turning a structure, an existing rural structure into a, you know, a place where you can have yoga retreats or small conferences or a bunch of those things, which are commonplace throughout Vermont and New Hampshire and Western Massachusetts. And could be thought of as complementary to or ancillary to a working, you know, working farm or a way in which the working landscape can be maintained because you're diversifying your business.
I thought that when this came up in the meeting, I felt like Brandy also responded by indicating that there may be some other notations in terms of like road use that would naturally, so where, you know, where if this is on Route 9, you, a certain level of industrial use might be established just because of the nature of moving it off the property. the property, whereas if it was, like, way back in the middle, you know, you, the road would not be up to code to be able to, like, move up to that level or not?
Well, there's a weird distinction there between overweight and oversize. So it turns out that homes, modular homes, don't weigh very much at all. And so they're oversized, but they're not overweight. We rate our roads for capacity and could make arguments about what kind of uses could happen on those roads, not on the basis of oversized loads, but on the basis of overweight loads. And so restrictions around mud season and those kinds of things where they shut the roads to large loads because of the damage that they do to the road in mud season, which would, you know, so that would conflict with your ability to run a business. It's associated with weight, not size.
So could we ask, could we ask Brandy to recommend a wording change that would clarify and distinguish between, like, heavy industrial use versus the guy making Amish sheds, or it's probably not Amish?
I did say reproduction, okay. Right. I'm sure he's gonna use a pencil pretty much any moment.
Particularly on...
Would just saying materials must come off the property, would that sort of line it up pretty good or is that too tight?
I, you know, that that's not an invalid response. I think it might be overly restrictive if you're gonna go into laminating and those kinds of things. I think what we're really trying to do is foster some kind of sense of fairly sophisticated small businesses engaging in high-end construction but on a pretty small scale. And whether that's viable or not, or even reasonable to think could or should happen in rural settings, I don't entirely know to be really honest.
I mean, I know where this whole thing came from.
Yeah, I'm sure you do.
And the person that is one of the butters is working for me, so I've heard a lot about it. So, and...
Can you tell?
No. Let me answer for Eric right now.
I've heard too much about it is the best way to put it.
Yeah.
But I understand, you know, setbacks and things on an issue. If it's, like, in the middle of a farm, that's one thing, but if it's close to a buddy neighbors, that's the big issue with the whole thing.
Yeah.
And so I think there needs to be something in that whole issue to take care of that.
Isn't that in the conditional use reviews, though? I mean, in the major site plan review that would be required on a conditional use, wouldn't that be, I mean, wouldn't those things like traffic impacts and noise impact and those kinds of things be addressed within those regulations?
Yes. I would think so, and that's what this comment says, but I think we should just, I think that there might be a need to tweak the definition as in addition.
I do so too, that these, I think if we can figure out a way to change the definitions as less industrial sounding, I think that that's like...
Yeah. Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
So we've got some direction, change definition.
Stand.
And review stands. Okay. And given that we have to come back to you, it will be difficult if this is the only thing left on the to-do list tonight.
Yeah.
But for one reason or another, it's not anymore. At 5:35, when we hit print, we were hoping that this would be maybe the only thing on the to-do list, but we were wrong.
Okay. Exhibition convention of common structure. So this is like part B?
Yes.
Is that number 13?
Number seven?
I know, I was teasing.
Yeah. By the way, number 13 started out as a compliment.
Yeah.
It ended as a compliment.
It was a little misstep in the middle. It was like an Oreo and then you look at the middle man, it's like, ew, what is that?
What? Who ever says that about an Oreo? Everybody looks the middle part. It's a good part. Just carry on and say it.
It's different, yeah.
Unless it's a change to this.
Okay. Thank you for bringing us back.
Try. Air transportation.
Was, was air transportation not conditional in certain zones? Was that allowed?
Yes. It was only conditional in urban center, service center, institutional and rural and industrial.
I agree with the change to make it conditional in all districts.
I mean, we think that a runway is probably very unlikely.
Well, we think...
But you could get a helipad.
Well, we think helipads are a reasonable assumption, you know, for institutional uses, for instance.
Anyone wants to buy aircraft, please contact me.
That's right, you have some expertise in this regard.
That's intriguing.
Okay.
Fitness, sports gym or athletic club is not a key.
That's right. I think that people who are exercising in rural zoning districts should be wearing lumberjack clothing and not doing those other things.
You want a weekend?
Yeah, it should be me on weekend.
But what, I mean, seriously now, I mean, if, if the goal of this is to allow for rural style athletic facilities, like horseback things and shooting ranges and that sort of a thing, it seems like perhaps that should be stated as opposed to saying, you know, I, I could, I, I think that having, for some of the same reasons we don't have, you know, other high-traffic and gathering places in rural districts, I think it makes sense to limit the sort of, I mean, obviously we want to allow for, like, a horseback riding facility in a rural zone.
So are you thinking, I mean...
But not like a, but not necessarily like a weightlifting gym.
So would you, I mean, I think that we could, we could probably footnote this in the rural, that, you know, like, we've done that someplace, other places in the table to make it clear that it's the outdoorsy, you know, rural type, non-structural.
Are the conditional use criteria general or are they specific to this use?
No, they're general.
They're general.
Yes, so a footnote to be more specific about the criteria would probably be helpful.
I was thinking more specific about it.
And to the developer, yeah.
To the reader of the document in the first place, yeah.
I think within the LCBS, because I was kind of researching around, that's the land classification code, which is where we've taken the uses and the definitions. I think there is a subcategory that gets down to, like, outdoor recreation, so we could try to tease that one way.
Great.
Number 10.
If it's pouring with rain, if anybody's driving that way, let's get a ride.
Yeah, I'll give her that.
I think I'm already full, but it's a kind of...
Fitness, sports gym, others in the residential neighborhood.
I'm good with that.
Yeah.
Yep.
I wouldn't mind being able to walk up the street.
I mean, the viability of a place is gonna be determined, but you could have a little yoga. Actually, there was recently, like, a yoga studio that was...
We're out in love with the tennis club.
Yes, that was out there, we had in mind. So everyone's okay with this?
Yeah.
Okay, so...
I don't remember that one either.
No, these, some of these came from our zoning administrator, so he would just fire, he would fire off emails, so I didn't, I'd have them if you would like to see them.
So these are like, these are like ringers?
Yeah.
Yeah, right. These are like, they're very like to the body.
Not all, just the way they're organized. So the open market does include flea markets and we do get quite a few complaints.
So this is saying that what occurs now should change to be more restrictive?
Yes.
I'm, I'm all on board on that.
That's good.
On the basis of the definition, right?
That's fine.
Brandy might have to, we might have to have her smooth this over a little bit, but she gets the idea of what we're, what we're trying to get.
And we would like to establish the definition, bedbug market.
So, so as does these aren't, aren't permitted in residential?
No.
You need a ride too.
I can, I can make good rides. I'll have one question once we get out of the...
They have a truck, so it's not very useful if you guys...
Sorry, I have a funny story afterwards.
Conditional use triggers major site plan review.
Okay, the suggested change for this is really confusing to me. Commence in a conditional use, not a change from one conditional use to another?
This was Brandy's suggested change. They're of the same or lesser intensity.
Would it, would it, like, that...
Do you want to do your drawing?
Okay.
Brad's gonna do a drawing.
Please, draw away.
Susan, why don't you get a draw for one? So this is, okay, so...
Don't be too professorial.
Be concise with this.
I wanted a slightly smaller sketch than this so we could really take it in. Okay.
I like that sketch, but it's not the way it is.
It was, it was a good sketch.
So if you think of the zone as, like, when you're right on it, if you've got a house and you're in residential neighborhood, it's a permitted use. You're right in the bullseye of what that zoning district is supposed to be doing. If on the other hand, I don't even know colors, if on the other hand, you have a conditional use, you're not in the bullseye, you're not in the center of the zone for that zoning district, right? You're already, like, stretching the...
You're out there.
You're out there, you're stretching the purpose of the, and the definition statement of the zoning district. If you want to go from here with a certain level of existing intensity to out here with even more intensity, so that would be increasing the intensity, then this gets you major site plan review.
So what, what's the distinguishing?
If you want to go from here just to another conditional use, so if you're, I'm gonna pretend that these actually are conditional uses, if you're going from a hairdressing salon to...
An office?
To an office and you're not changing any level of intensity with your conditional use, then you're good, right? You don't get...
It doesn't constitute a major site.
Right.
Okay, here's the place where I'm concerned.
But if you go from here to more intensity, then you get major site plan.
May I join you in your drawing?
Sure.
This is the place where I'm concerned about major site plan, this first one.
The permitted conditional?
Yes. Because this is the place where you get small business owners, and I will say, you know, you know, full disclosure, like, I did this myself. I went from a house on Western Avenue that I wanted to have a human office. Had I had to go through all the stuff that we are proposing, we'll have to go through, I would not have been able to open my office and hire the five people who are working for me. And I know we've gotten a lot of comments about this and this is about a lot of different, you know, we're hearing this from a lot of people who are big developers and developers of bigger scale projects in different places, but I'm really concerned about small-scale entrepreneurs in this town being really impacted by this major site plan review standards and requirements that will come out. So I just want to say that both as, you know, just a member of this commission, but also like, I'm just very problematic.
Well, now, I understand, appropriate to that, aren't there places on Western Avenue or whatnot that are zoned for office as a permitted use? And, and so if that's the case, if you live or if you owned a property where converting from residential to office was permitted use...
It's not, but it's not. It's not as long, if you're not living in the house. It's a conditional use to change it from a residence to, like in my case, an office that's not an owner-occupied residence. That was a conditional use and I had to go through the whole DRB.
Right, but there must be places where it is a permitted use and not a conditional use.
I mean, and it's not like there's such a huge option of offices to, or places to buy to, to open a small business. I just think that the comments, I know, I, I know, I feel like I'm, like, the voice for small business on this commission, but like, I think...
Yeah, well, you are.
Yeah.
So I am.
You're doing great.
I just want us to...
No, 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 that's fine.
I want to say, though, that I feel like there, there is, it's very easy because it's not convenient and it doesn't fit neatly with our goals, some of the goals, you know, and the, it's much easier to, to be more restrictive and, you know, it's, and, and it's easier to have all the, to have it all laid out so that we can protect the town. And I, and I want to support that. And I also, and I want us to take seriously the concerns that are being brought to the commission and, you know, like, I know some of them are on a scale where, you know, I'm like, okay, at some level, you do really need to have all those reviews, you need to have the professional drawings, you need to have the professional landscapes and lighting, all those things. And for people who are doing small businesses, which is, you know, a lot of how the, the growth and economy of this place works, I just don't want us to be overly restrictive so that people feel like they just can't do it. Like, it's a leap for most small entrepreneurs to start a business and to take that leap. If you add on, like, you know, another significant burden, you know, it's kind of like the note that we got from the Kathy's, like, about how they started. It's, it's, I just, I just want the commission to take this seriously. I think it's a really big issue.
I have just two comments. First, you know, a lot of our concern stems from that, you know, if it was a residence and there's residents all around you, that those residential uses need to be protected from what may be transpiring next to them or adjacent to them. But at the same point, it surprises me that there isn't a zone where this is already permitted. This is always a conditional use.
Well, I mean, there's the, it's permitted in mixed use, it's permitted in neighborhood center, but in the residential, it's always been a conditional.
Didn't we talk in other meetings about having a threshold by which would still be a conditional use, but it would not be considered a major site plan?
No, that's, I think that's where we're at right now.
Can we, that's where we're going?
Yes.
I think that's where we're...
Yes.
I think that's what this adjustment attempts to do.
So, which I don't see, I don't think it's sufficient.
When we talked about in the office, and maybe it's not, not...
Conveyed.
Conveyed properly, but we were less concerned about the move from a permitted to a conditional. It was from one conditional to a conditional use of...
Right.
More intensity. So maybe you have a shop now and now you're gonna go to a bar and you're gonna have, it's gonna have hours that are open later and it's gonna, you know, that kind of thing.
Which is what that diagram attempted to represent.
Right, but I don't think that that diagram and that, and that, these words here are Rachel's...
No, they're not. They're slightly different from Rachel's concern. Rachel's concern is actually...
They're significantly different.
Rachel's concern is in the middle of the diagram, which is how do you get popped from, you know, from going from permitted to conditional and requiring a major site plan at that point.
Yeah, so let's tackle that.
So can I, since I understand that, so the way you worded this, you're really giving the jurisdiction to the administrative officer to make the call if something needs a major site plan review, if it's moving from, like, conditional A to conditional C in their view, right? So is that correct?
But there's a hierarchy of uses that he will use, he or she would use to define that increase in intensity.
Well, so then couldn't that also then, that jurisdiction, I guess, also then be applied to moving from permitted use to a conditional use where...
Yeah, well, I think we've talked in the fourth, before that it's easier to set like a, some sort of threshold number, either a square footage or...
Well, we do have, we do have those thresholds, so if you're, if you're not concerned about the change from a permitted use to a conditional use that doesn't require a new principal building, it's not a substantial renovation, doesn't add parking or pervious, you know, over the threshold that...
So there's no change that would not change parking or have a renov, I mean, like, it, basically there would be, I mean, it's very, again, this is where I think that it's a little unrealistic to think that we are not going to be really supporting small entrepreneurs from starting businesses, to say, if anybody's having a business, most, most people are going to have some, some change in traffic, like some, some visitors of, of, some change in parking or some kind of renovations. I mean, I don't know what the answer is. I just think that this is, this is a real issue and I think it's really been, it's, it just seems like the commission's been, we've been, like, just trying to sort of set this aside or pretend that this isn't really an issue because...
Hell, no. We've been, yeah, I wouldn't hear, let's finish what you said.
No, I mean, I think there is leeway, so if, if the change from a permitted to conditional use is not, doesn't make a fuss for anybody, then the other triggers would be, you know, if you're building a new building. So say you're, you know, you've got a permitted use, you want to go conditional and you're gonna have to build a new building, well then, you're making site changes and you should come into compliance.
Sure.
If you're substantially renovating...
Um, if you're substantially renovating the existing principal building, which we have as improvements at more than 50% of the building's assessed value, so that would be, that's a big improvement. Um, construction of more than 10 parking spaces or 2,000 square feet of impervious surface. So the former auto repair station on Western Avenue that changed into a hairdressing salon. They actually did add parking, but they would have been under the 10, 10 parking spaces, so that wouldn't have, that wouldn't trigger a major site plan review. They did a great job.
So that example, is that something that was considered a major, would be considered a major site plan under these rights?
I would say no, because that was a conditional use of an auto repair shop.
Is it a major renovation of their building then?
But they reduced, but they reduced the intensity of the use of the site.
So it went from one conditional to a different conditional?
Yes.
Right, which was less of a.
Yes, exactly.
No, it is true. I mean, under the reading of this, we don't know how much they put into it, if it was more than 50%.
Building probably wasn't worth the whole lot to start with, so it's probably fair to say that they triggered 50% of it. Yeah. I mean, just the, you know, the extra plumbing and just the finished work inside, because it was a fairly bare bone structure, it was just a gas station, so it was a, you know, one tiny little office in a bay for working on, and now it's, you know, it's a hairdressing salon. So there's lots of extra work that would have pushed it, but.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just saying that the example, obviously, that I'm most familiar with, which is my, means participating with my house, which was turned into an office, which was a conditional that changed from a primary residence to an office and a residence, which would have triggered a major site plan review, which is right?
The way it's written now, yes. The way it's written now.
But there are, aren't there locations where you can have a primary residence, a residence and an office?
That would be a mixed use.
Yeah.
In the mix, so within the mixed use. So your concern is, because yours is in the residential zone?
I'm not concerned about my property.
No, 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 I'm just saying.
That example.
So, yes, I mean, so I will say, when I decided to, to expand, create a business, I looked for suites to rent all over town. For a long time, there were none, none. So then I started considering buying a property, and I found one that seemed like an appropriate fit for my business. It is not like there is a huge availability of options for people who want to start businesses. Literally, like, there was not a suite to rent in the entire town. Okay? So it's not like there's, like, oh, well, just go find a house in mixed use. It's not that, it doesn't exist. And so I'm concerned about us being excessively restrictive and creating financial, um, I mean, I, I want us to have good solid regulations that are going to help us have, protect our neighborhoods and have the kinds of structures that we want. This is, this is a real, it's a real concern, though. What, do you have a, what, would, do you have a suggestion? Like, what you think? I don't know, I mean, I'm hope, I mean, I, I mean, I don't know if it would be like a, you know, a dollar amount that seems, because like, who knows about inflation? I mean, like, this is a, you know, I don't, I don't have an answer. I just, it, I, I don't know the answer.
So in the mixed use zone, this is not a problem? This is only a problem in the residential?
No, it could be a problem in the mixed use. I mean, any conditional use going to another conditional use in the mixed use, it would be a problem. I mean, setting aside the example. Well, that's, so that's what brings me back to the decision being made by the administrative officer. So if you're giving him leeway to make, to essentially make a judgment call between two different types of conditional uses with the set, with possible impact, changes and impacts, then why wouldn't he also, or he or she also be able to make that call between a permitted use and a conditional use? If you're trying to make a judgment call on an impact change?
Well, I was thinking that permitted to conditional wouldn't trigger a major site plan.
And that these other things.
And these other tests.
Right.
I think that's a really good solution.
Yeah, I'd be fine with that.
Do we all like that?
Yeah. Say it again.
The conditional, the changing from permitted to conditional would not automatically trigger a site plan review. It would only trigger a site plan review if there were.
Major site plan.
Major site, sorry.
You still need to do a site plan.
Right.
Different process.
But a major site plan review.
If you're proposing.
Like rebuilding a building or like, you know.
So those threshold elements are in the definition, and it's not the condition.
A really good solution.
Would you say that for all changes between, um, your system?
Yeah, exactly. All permitted to conditional in all districts.
Well, but then what about conditional to conditional of a higher intensity?
Right. I think conditional to conditional with a higher intensity should get major site plan.
And is there a definition for higher intensity?
Uh, there is, right, there's a hierarchy.
Right.
Right, yeah. And then it, then it's up to the zoning officer to determine.
And, you know, there's that process, there's that due process built in, which is you don't like the decision of the administrative officer, then you get to appeal it to the D O B.
Right.
So.
I think that that could be a really workable solution of just having it so that that first key to see doesn't necessarily trigger a major site plan on its own.
Yeah, I think we need, right. I think that needs to, we need to figure out how that, that's clearly conveyed, but that's what kind of the, we spoke earlier today, that was the direction.
Right.
Is there, is there a, um, I'm trying to think. So if somebody went from permitted to conditional and a resident who wasn't, who was a neighbor, didn't like it, is there a, is there some sort of recourse for that?
Take an appeal.
Take an appeal.
To the development review.
Right, and so it still gets a hearing.
Minor site plans do not get a hearing.
Right.
They.
Do they get a letter to the letters?
No. You get a big red P sign.
Uh, letters would still get notified, yes.
But end or undermine it if it's not, if it doesn't go before the D O B?
I would think so. We should.
We should confirm that.
We should confirm that, but I mean, it's a plan review, and site plan review requires, I mean, how does somebody know if they're an interested person, if they don't know what's going on?
Right, exactly, that's what I, that's what I was getting at, and that's what I was thinking, that's why I brought it up. Because one of the, there's two things that we're weighing here, and it's always complicated. And so on the one hand, we're weighing the ability of people.
You all right?
Okay.
Yeah, I just, I just. It's okay, yeah.
Were you just electrocuted? Is that what you're saying, or is this loud?
Picked it up and then amputated.
Okay.
I'm fine.
Okay.
Camera's not there. Is it in crying?
That dog's going to come in here and wonder what the heck you're doing.
Have your dog in the car?
No, it's in my office.
Oh, it is.
Watching television. So, um.
Hopefully.
Hopefully.
The needs of the neighbors and the.
Right, so the interest of the neighbors and, and the property owner and, and their intention with each other, and so where, which goes back to this diagram. When you're planning inside the, the red zone and it's all permitted, then there's an understanding shared by everybody that it's all okay.
Fair, yeah.
Right, when you start doing things that are a little outside the red zone, then people, butters and neighbors have got an interest in the outcome. And I would have to say, acknowledge what you're saying. I think that the experience from case law and from outside of the deal here, which is receiving and processing complaints, is that things often start off very small and with good intentions, and then they grow, and they grow in ways that everybody was less able, you know, less likely to predict. And even quite established institutions that are large and making a really good contribution to the broader community can find themselves in tension with the neighbors because their interests are now no longer the same as the neighbors'. And the hospital actually would fit into one of those institutions that really pushes the broader neighborhood's ability to accept what they're doing, because it actually does manifest as challenges to their quality of life in terms of noise and interruption and a whole bunch of things. So where we draw this line is really important, and how arduous we make it for the applicants is also really important. Notwithstanding your comments about the general market for rental, you know, office space or a whole bunch of other things. And, and they're important, but I do feel, before we confirm one solution or the other here, that we have to give some due, um, consideration to these, to the flip side, which is, okay, it was okay when it was just three people working in an office, you know, in an existing house with everyone parking, you know, in their driveway. Now it's 15 people working in a small house, and they're parking all over the place, and, you know, I'm, I'm impacted.
Can I ask you a question about that, though?
Sure.
So my question for you is, how would requiring all of those, you know, like, extensive drawings and letting plans and all of that speak to that? Like, if you have, if you have a business that starts off as a small, like, and that's what, that's what the plan would be getting drawn up for, and say, five or 10 years later, it's a different business, right? And it's outgrown its space, or it's outgrown its, you know, location or whatever, and its impact on the neighborhood, or it's the hospital, and it's down on a much bigger scale. How does, does creating these very expensive requirements upfront for a very small business prevent that other problem, which is a problem, I'm not saying it's not, but I just, I don't see necessarily pricing out a very small business because someday they might be a large business. You know, they're not going to be able to predict that necessarily anyway. I mean, you've given, you know, over the various meetings, various examples of that small thing that then turned into a big thing, which became a problem. But that doesn't, this, have, triggering a major site plan for a plan for a small business doesn't fix that problem. I think there are different issues. So I just think it's important not to get them.
Well, it does fix it in the sense that the neighbors can rely on the work that was done initially and complain, and then bring that to the attention of the zoning officer, who will, what do they do to the owner of the overgrown business?
Violation, violation.
If his grounds for violation notice, then they issue a violation notice.
I think, yeah, I just think that they're two, kind of two different issues. I think it's important not to get them.
They're related.
They're related, but they're.
Then one forms the basis for the future violation, then.
But there's still, I mean, there's still a site plan review. It's not that there's not a site plan review. It's just not a, doesn't require a professional landscaper and lighting designer, that's all. I mean, they're still bound to it.
Right.
Where I'm, where I'm concerned is, okay, conditional uses. I, I think the reason they fell under major projects is because, should be a public hearing about it. When you look at the minor site plan review, that actually is not. It's kind of the department heads, the technical review committee takes a look at it, makes recommendations, and the Z A can sign off on it.
Right.
I'm concerned about taking conditional uses out of having, you know, a public hearing, because I think that that's problematic from the neighbors' perspective, even if they get noticed. It makes me uncomfortable.
Professional.
And I think, under state law, actually, it might be required.
You talked about, at one point, I think, about, um, reducing the cost burden of having to have the professional experts come in for projects of a small size.
So maybe we need like a small, medium, and large.
Or permitted to conditional.
Family size.
Instead of, you know, something in the middle that has a public hearing, but is under the threshold that requires a litany of professional services.
I like that idea, because I think that having a public hearing is important, actually, because, because I think, even when I think about my project, I'm like, there should, you know, nobody came and complained.
Be transparent.
It should be transparent, and the neighbors should have a, have an opportunity. And the part that's concerning is, is more the cost burden and the, the requiring that everything be done by a licensed landscape architect and a professional lighting designer, and, you know, that, that, and it's, and I think that, that there was a letter we received today that really spoke to that, too. You know, that people need to be able to bootstrap a new business, and as long as they can present that in a way that meets the requirements of the application, I think they should be able to do that.
Let me say, I think we're more interested in seeing the information delivered rather than the stamp of the person that's delivering the information.
I agree. That they can meet the criteria.
If they can meet the criteria, I mean, that's, I think that's.
And we've talked through in previous meetings with Brandy how, in fact, if there's a property owner who were to go to the local nursery and ask for advice, it's entirely acceptable that the nursery person who's got a form of certification can say, yeah, this is an appropriate plant for the buffer. It's not going to grow too wide, and it's not going to grow too tall. It's, you know, yes, if, you know, this rudimentary sketch with identifying the species of the plants is fine for, you know, I've looked at what you're looking for from this document. These plants fit that description, that need. The same stuff with the, the lighting plans. If, if you're buying fixtures, you can access the information about the performance of the fixtures. And so it's not as arduous as, as some of the comments make out, but I feel that it's important to acknowledge that it's not, like I said, the professional stamp we're looking for, it's the content, the quality of the content that we're looking at. I should, but you know, that part of the response also there is, sometimes we just yearn for somebody who's used a ruler to draw a site plan, okay? Sometimes we really like it if they've written, this is my house on the plan, rather than something else. Sometime, we, I am talking, like, this stuff doesn't meet the back of a napkin threshold, okay, so.
I think that my, I think that the addition on my house was, is literally on a napkin.
Yeah, so think of my.
Before we bought the house, I was like, wow, that's interesting.
On file?
Yeah. Why, you file what you get.
Like a torn piece of paper.
Right.
And, and I, I totally get that, and it's.
Oh, and it's not the Gattisprick address?
And it's still, like, and.
So there's this, so there's this thing.
And I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't.
Right.
So.
Overburden small entrepreneurs because of that.
So we're now adding another category?
Well, I think, I think that I need.
I need to think about this.
If you're comfortable, maybe we can come back with some suggestions.
Right.
Yeah, great.
I mean, I'm, I'm uncomfortable moving everything into minor site plan because I do think public hearing is a requirement for conditional use, but so how do we, how do we deal with the...
Or could you do a minor site plan for conditional use that require, you know, but when it's conditional use, it also requires a public hearing?
Well, yeah, I mean, like, chat about it with Brandy and...
Yeah, anyway, just another, if you guys are...
Yeah, I think we, we get the thrust of where you're coming from and I think that what we're trying to do is balance the needs and the interests of the butters with the applicant.
Sure.
And it's not intended to just make it pretty bit of expensive and difficult and I don't think, don't think the purpose even of the major site plan at that point is to...
Well, it's not the purpose of it.
Yeah, but you also have laypeople reading it and they might just shut down and be scared because the language is enough, that, you know, like, short of coming to your office and having a nice conversation with the really helpful planning staff, you may lose people who never come in the door because of it.
Right.
Yeah, I'm a pretty, like, you know, relatively smart person that can figure things out and I was pretty intimidated by, by the old process and this one is like 10, it feels like, and just reading it seems significantly more complicated, so, or cumbersome anyway. So, thank you for bringing that up.
Projects that should not be required to provide professional drawings.
I think we just, I think we just dealt with that one way or another.
It'll come back.
Okay.
I don't understand number 14, so can you explain what that comment is?
So, um, this came from Dennis Smith, I kind of teased out from what he was saying. So, he was concerned, under the frontage standards in, in certain zoning districts, it requires that any pre-existing parking, storage or display be removed from the minimum front setback. Remember, he thought this was 40 feet, but actually in the neighborhood center, the minimum front setback is 10 feet.
Yeah.
In the service center, it's 20 feet.
And I think he also misunderstood that this was only if he was conducting some new work, he's not, it's not going to retroactively.
Right, it doesn't automatically retroactively. What I would say is, there is a section under the parking standards that basically gives you that out if you've got certain physical and site restrictions, you know, that would say, you know, look, we really want it out, but we realize that there are some, if you're a previously developed site, it might not, might not work.
So, there are existing businesses, for instance, that only have access to parking in the front of the lot, they don't have side yards and they don't have access to the rear of the lot. And so, that's pretty apparent and so under those circumstances, we wouldn't be going, we would go, oh, okay, I guess that's where the parking's going to have to be then.
I like this language addition.
Right.
What is S M H A?
Special Flood Hazard area, sorry.
Oh, yeah.
All right.
And so, these, uh, these next three came from the zoning administrator. We've had some recent problems with getting elevation certificates after the project is done and they don't need the requirement and so...
That's a problem.
Yeah, so he, he recently attended a training. He recently attended a training and this is kind of a...
Well, we're all for that.
Go for it.
Really give you a highlight.
Next.
Yeah.
Um, so our flood regulations are ready, do not allow residences in this floodway, which is consistent with...
This is residences, not residents, this is that people can't, can't...
I know, I was only about that, no one's allowed to go there.
Sorry.
Actually, we, we mean that too, but...
Yeah, if the house is gone, the people are gone.
Freudian slip.
Yeah, so, um, he's just looking for like a very clear statement so that it doesn't get misinterpreted anywhere, so he agrees that it's in there, but he just wants...
Ding ding ding, and the next one too, that's...
Um, oh, this is a municipal ticket policy, this is an enforcement, and we don't, we're allowed to, to get on each offense and you can defend, you can define the events and normally it's daily, so...
Okay, awesome, cool.
Okay. So, thank you very much, everyone. Do we want to, um, I think we need to, in, work through the details of what Monroe provided and hope that that turns up.
Not tonight.
No.
You said that Matt...
Don't cave on the slope.
He had Matt, he had the conformity.
Oh, that was interesting.
Eric says don't cave on the slope.